Right in time, right on time. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes. Yep, can hear you fine.
Yeah, we can hear you throughout the whole Opera House here. Huh? No, that's good.
Well, you know, I'm thinking this would have been a hell of a lot better than trying to zoom from over here. But anyway, let's have at her.
Okay, we're live, Mark.
Yep, good. Okay. Good evening. We, good afternoon, I guess, still. We, the Select Board convened the meeting earlier and went into an executive session for a personnel matter. And now we are in our public portion of the meeting. The, as, this is our first meeting physically present. But the public participation is still the same, which is if you have comments, please contact billpost@wpost@rockportmain.gov or submit comments through the livestream during the course of the meeting. We are now going to convene as wastewater commissioners. And with that, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up a minute. We have Mark Kelly on the phone, as well as Jeff Hamilton and myself. So we do have a quorum for the meeting. And we hope that Doug Cole will be calling in, but he had a little minor emergency. All right.
I would, I would move that we exit as Select Board and reconvene as wastewater commissioners.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Jeff?
Aye.
Mark? Mark?
Yes.
And Deborah votes yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We are now in the wastewater commissioner meeting. And the first thing we're going to do is discuss the wastewater billing, which, as we all know, there have been a lot of comments and issues with over the last couple of weeks. We have with us, thank you very much, Megan, our finance director, who has been doing a yeoman's job on trying to sift through all of the various issues. And one of the things that we asked Megan to do was to put together a sort of wastewater update, but I call it a wastewater 101, because I certainly benefit by it too. And she's done that, and kind of goes through the history a little bit of, of our wastewater system. And so if you would just kind of take us through that, I'd appreciate it, Megan.
Sure. Do you want me to go through the history of the system as well?
Yeah, a little bit. Just touch, just, just hit the highlights and obviously we don't have to read the whole thing.
So, our system was first constructed in the eighties. There was issues around harbor discharge, discharge into the harbor. And the way for the town to fix that and alleviate the problem on homeowners at the time to install new septic systems was to install a public sewer. And that sewer basically serviced this Pascal Ave and Main Street section of town, as well as the hospital. So, the bulk of our, the start of our system is almost forty years, is forty years old at this point. Since then, we've done some extensions. We added a tax increment financing district for Route One, so that we could extend the sewer down Route One and use offset tax revenue to help pay for that system. In 2003, 2004, sewer was talked about in the comprehensive plan, essentially to extend it the whole length of Commercial Street. In the summer of 2014, we did a feasibility study to extend it from Alwood Ave, which is where the Public Works Garage is, to Sea Light Lane. And then in 2019, voters approved a bond essentially for us to connect the south and north ends of Route One and connect the two ends and finish the Commercial Street extension. There are two factors that are considered in each quarterly bill that's sent out. The first one is the debt service fee. And that debt service fee basically covers any capital work that we have done to the system. So whether we are paying for that capital debt out front or we are paying debt service payments on that capital work, that's all captured in the capital, in the debt service fee. So, for the fiscal year 2021 budget, we've allocated $279,000 to above-ground capital maintenance work and $75,000 to below-ground capital maintenance work. And we also have an annual capital reserve deposit of $40,000, which we use a portion of that every year to help offset the capital investments that we have in years that we have to replace a $150,000 pump station. Or we use that to try to keep our capital investment at a steady level. In addition to that, we have budgeted, like I said, $104,000 from the capital reserve to make the net amount billed to users $290,000. So that's any new capital maintenance work that we are doing. We also have to add into that $276,142, which is our principal interest payments to cover current debt that is due by the system. This includes two debt payments that we make to Camden, four upgrades that they have done to the plant, and the Ross and Ave pump station, which is the pump station that we send our waste through to get to the Camden Treatment Plant. So, when we take that into consideration, of that $276,000, $212 of it is funded by TIF revenues, which leaves a net amount of $63,551. We currently have 1,194 equivalent users of the system, which means each equivalent user is being charged $296.11 per year, or $74.03 per quarter. This was an increase of $12.24 per quarter over last year, which was ending June 30th, 2020.
And then equivalent user is not just one, I mean, it's one person, it's not per household, right? So if you've got two people in your household, then there's two equivalent, equivalent users.
It's based on the number of bedrooms and bathrooms you have in your house. And that is outlined in the sewer ordinance, what your equivalent user is.
Regardless of how many people you actually have.
Right. If you're unsure of how many equivalent users you're being charged for, you can either divide your debt service fee by the 7403, and that will tell your equivalent users. Or you can reach out to Scott Bick for the code enforcement officer, and he can tell you, based on the sewer ordinance, what your equivalent user rate is. Now, if the sewer ordinance, if you were connected to the sewer in the eighties, and since then, the sewer ordinance has changed, your equivalent user stayed the same to whatever you were initially put in. So in the eighties, if you were put in at one and a half equivalent users, but by today's standards, you'd be at two equivalent users, you still remain at the one and a half. The second portion of the bill is the usage rate, which essentially captures everything that's not considered in the debt service fee. So that's administration costs, it's contractual services to maintain, and daily monitoring of our system and pump stations. It covers our lean processing fees, staff time, main water billing, insurance, and things of that sort. So, the bulk of the bill comes from your usage rate. And the, while the rate is the 1925, your total charge is solely dependent on how many units of waste you're sending out of your house to be treated. So if you're sending seven units a quarter to be treated, it's the 1925 multiplied by seven units. Some major changes that affected this year's usage rates are, is that anybody that's connected to the system knows that we spent a significant amount of time last summer going into people's homes or crawling in their crawl spaces to make sure that there were no illegal connections to the system. So, a legal, an illegal connection is anything that is discharging into the system that's not metered. So roof drains, sump pumps, if you're draining a swimming pool into the system, a hot tub, anything that we haven't metered coming in is considered an illegal connection going out. So we have identified that we have an inflow problem of about 31% of what we are being billed from, from Camden and Rockland, and what we're billing out. So that has an effect of about $150,000 to the sewer users. So, this year in the capital improvement plan, we dedicated $50,000 into reviewing and sending a motorized camera through our sewer pipes to make sure that the problem of inflow isn't ours. We have dedicated resources, in the time that I've been here, to the tune of about $20,000 a year to camera our pipes. We started at the ones that were first put in, and we were moving to the newer ones. But we've dedicated the resources to finishing what we haven't gotten done to make sure that the inflow problem isn't in our pipes. Because if there was a crack in the top of the pipe, any groundwater that's coming into the ground could seep through that crack, which could cause our problem. So, we're making sure that we're dedicating resources to finishing that. We, at the time we did the budget, we also projected increases from the city of Rockland and the town of Camden for the cost associated in treating our waste. It's been, going through this process, it's been asked to me several times why our rate is not low like Camden's or Rockland's. And that's kind of a two-part answer. The first is that Camden's charging us, and presumably Rockland, I haven't heard back from them yet, is charging us the same rate as their customers are being charged, which is reasonable. I mean, it's not costing them any less to treat our product than it is the product that's going through their system, that they're producing. It also has to be considered that Camden and Rockland have significantly more users of their system than we do. Camden has 1,880 users, not including the town of Rockport as a user. And Rockport has 1,194 users. This means that they have more users to split the cost of the system amongst. On the other side, Rockland has 4,600 users on their system, which is a difference of 3,406 users. And the other part of this is that our lean costs have significantly increased. We are processing more leans for non-payment of sewer bills. We currently have 195,000 in our aging rolling accounts receivable, which means that it is 90 days or more old. Any bill that hasn't been paid that's more than 90 days old does start going through the lean process. And we do that quarterly now instead of once a year.
And before you get off of that, when we do go through the lean process and then the, the delinquent user pays up, they also have to pay, they have to reimburse the town for the cost of the leaning process and et cetera, including our internal costs, correct? So, we eventually recoup those amounts.
We're supposed to, in an essence. The state sets the fee for the administration costs that we can reimburse, which doesn't even come close to covering what our actual administration costs are for the lean process. Through the lean process, they do have to reimburse us for any mailing fees and the cost of filing the documents at the registry of deeds. Plus, they're also going to have to pay interest and late payment fees for that process.
So, Bill, excuse me, is that something that MMA has ever addressed with the legislature as to why we don't have a more accurate recoupment?
Not that I can recall recent, recent years.
Can you put that on your list? I'll put it on my Vicky Duder list, too.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think part of that is if you, when you, when you look at the big picture, you weigh in the late fees and the interest costs, too. It does come closer to covering our admin costs, if you add those in. But it doesn't, the, the regular fee for the, that we're allowed to charge for staff time doesn't cover what the actual hours are that goes into processing those leans.
And wastewater leans are a lot more involved than other leans because we have a third party that does our billing. So, we manually go through the accounts that are 90 days plus, make sure that any payments that have been made were applied to the prior balance and that we're truly only leaning people that are 90 days or greater overdue.
Before I forget this, can you guys put together sort of an example that we could share with some of our state reps and so forth? That shows just a hypothetical situation of how much we wouldn't be getting back in a normal process or whatever, just to give them information that they need to address it legislatively?
Sure.
Thanks.
Any other questions about usage fees? Okay, the billing. So, Main Water, as any sewer user knows, Main Water does our billing for sewer. And how that's done is your incoming water is metered by them, and they base your sewer usage based on that incoming water, which makes sense. Anything that comes in must eventually come out. If your house is on well water and not connected to public water, our sewer ordinance has a formula to determine what your base usage is. And then we apply the usage rate to that base rate. What users could do, I had, I talked to a lady that lives alone. She's being charged 14 and a half units based on this formula, where Main Water figures a single user would use seven units. So essentially, she's being charged double based on this formula, because she's on well water. If you're on well water and want to have that incoming water metered, like is, if you were on public water, you can put a meter on your incoming well water and call Main Water quarterly without reading and be charged that amount instead of the amount based on the formula. Which in this woman's case, she would more than pay for the meter and the plumber in the first quarter of her billing to put the meter on and call Main Water.
And I'd encourage anybody who doesn't have a, who doesn't have a, a meter for their irrigation system, or their gardening with their hose, or whatever that they do that, because it really does make a big difference.
It does make a big difference. And I think even at, like, this whole process has enlightened me a lot about how much water I use at home, because I'm not on public water. And it's easy, I think, to not realize how much water you're putting through your hose when you're watering your garden, or watering your flowers, or even just washing your deck off. If you do that a few times a week, that's a lot of water that's coming into your house but not going through the sewer system. So if you had a meter on those outside spigots, you could save yourself quite a bit of money by calling those readings into Main Water. So like I stated earlier, when I went through the usage rates, if your normal usage is $14 a quarter, multiplied by the usage rate of 1925, you'd be charged $269.50 for the quarter, or $89.83 a month. Also included in the quarterly bill, which is broken out separately, when you look at the bill, is your debt service fee. And based on however many equivalents you have, you'd see a $74.03 charge on that. I do think it's important that everybody know we are taking the inflow problem very seriously. Like I said, we're dedicating a lot of resources to making sure that our pipes aren't the problem. But this really is a team effort. If you know that you have an illegal connection into the system, remove it. Or talk to us, and we find a way to meter it so that you're being charged what you're being, what you're sending through the system. So that way, all the users aren't picking up the cost for that.
So, can you just highlight that, I think that with the problems that we've been experiencing or hearing about these last couple of weeks, that basically it breaks down into sort of a third, a third, and a third? So could you just touch on those scenarios?
So, with the pandemic, Main Water did not read meters in April, which makes sense. A lot of things didn't happen because of the pandemic. So what they did is they estimated the April usage based on either what you would use the prior April, or what your average was, and they billed you for that amount. In July, when the bills went out, they did an actual meter reading. So, in some cases, their estimations were fine in April. About a third of those, there was no difference. About a third of them were overestimated in April, which means that if a meter reading had been done in April, they would have paid less than what they had actually paid. So they received essentially a credit on their July bill. And a third of them were underestimated in April, which means that those people received a bill that was incredibly shocking to them. Not only were, was there a usage gap between April and July, but July 1st, we also had a very large usage increase. So the problem was magnified by our rate increase. And that happened to about a third of the users that were billed in July. From that, we've been able to determine that a reasonable difference. So we went, anything that was 10 units or above different from what they were billed in April to what they were billed in July. And we, that resulted in about 117 users seeing a positive difference between what they were billed in April and what they were billed in July.
So, can you talk about the, the, the April, applying the April, or the prior billing?
So, one of the suggestions I have is that I've come up with a formula to essentially give these people that were underestimated in April credit. Because it's not of any doing of theirs, and I wouldn't even go as far as blaming it on Main Water. Main Water used what they had available to them. More people were home, so there was some instances where people were using more than what was expected. I mean, Main Water said that they've seen a 16% increase in usage across the state. So, what I would suggest is to find the difference. First, add the April and July usage together. Divide that by two, you get a quarterly average. It's the best that we can use for now. And subtract what they were billed in April from that average that we find between the two quarters, and offer them a credit of the difference between the old rate and the new rate, which is $5.75. To do that for the 117 customers would be $12,652.88. But if we had actual meter readings in April, they would have paid that $13.50 instead of the 1925, anyway.
So in other words, I, if, if somebody is listening and not following the, the, if, if the, as you say, if the, if the user had been properly billed because there'd been a meter reading in April, and they should have paid more, they would have paid at the $13.50 rate, not at the new rate. Whereas now, they're getting bills for, the July bill reflects the new rate, correct? When some of that, portion of that should have really been at the $13 rate.
Right.
So that's what the idea is, to, to, to lower some of those bills.
And the fairest way, the most equitable way that I can come up with to do that is to do it for the 117 customers the same way, and use that formula to determine what their credit would be.
Your math is sound in what you've just proposed.
And does that require any, I mean, does that require any action on our part to do that?
I think that you should, just essentially to cover us in authorizing that amount of credits.
Okay.
Yeah, with that, with that formula in mind, yes.
Yeah. Mark, do you have any comment? Can, can you hear okay?
No, no, I was fine, thank you. Just following along with what the written word was and what the verbal. So we're, we're good. I will say, from my little life experiences, I had an era in my April bill. And obviously, I think that was, from what I'm hearing, a guesstimate over averages. But, you know, all those averages don't work out the same, because, anyway. We're getting to the bottom. Thank you.
So, I think that on these, there's, for those who are, who are watching or will watch later, there are several recommendations or suggestions, options, I should say, that Megan and Bill have set forth of things that we might be able to do to, to relieve the, the burden at the moment. And I think we should probably address each of those separately. So, I'll try to do a motion on the one that we've just discussed.
Sure.
And that is that I, I move that for those residents who were undercharged in their April 2020 bill, that their, that they, their bills be adjusted in the formula recommended by the staff to the prior rate of $13.50. Does that work?
Yes. I would add 117.
The 117 users.
And the total for the, was, how much? Those two details added to the motion, I think would.
Well, what if it comes out a little bit different on the total? I think the 117 users, don't you think? We'll take care of it. So I'm in the motion to include those 117 users. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Jeff?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, Megan, will those users then get a new bill issued to them, those 117?
They will not get a new bill issued to them. But what we could do is mail them letters that says you'll be receiving X amount of credit on your sewer bill, and we can mail those out this week.
Would that credit be applied in the next billing cycle, or is it applied during this one?
It will be applied as soon as I send the updates to Main Water.
Okay, because, yeah, so what, in other words, I think Jeff and I are going in the same direction. We don't want users to have to pay more than they, you know, shell out more than they might otherwise have to as a result.
Well, some of them have already paid it. So they'll receive the credit on their next bill. So their next bill will be reduced by that credit. But for those of them that have not paid it yet, can, will be able to deduct the amount in the letter. But for those of them that have not paid it yet, can, will be able to deduct the amount in the letter from their sewer bill.
Bill they received?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and while we're talking about the billing itself, uh, before we talk about budget adjustments?
Yep.
I wanted to say that, um, it's my recommendation, I think Megan goes along with me here as well, is that we let those users know that have the issues with their wastewater bills, that we're not gonna, um, the bills are due in the next couple of weeks or.
Uh, they're due today in the seventeenth.
Yeah, so that we're not gonna charge any late fees or interest on those accounts that we're still investigating. I think it's important that they understand that and as long as the board is in agreement with that.
Yeah, absolutely, great. Doug, did you join us? Mark, are you still there?
I am.
Okay, I heard a beep, but. Okay, um, so should we move into the, um, other budget considerations for wastewater that we might consider?
I'm good with that.
Hmm?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
So we'll start with the debt service fee. Uh, the first change that I would recommend here is, um, we have had an employee in the wastewater department move on. So the need to purchase a second vehicle is not there currently. And I think it wouldn't be unreasonable to ask the department to wait a fiscal year, uh, to purchase another vehicle. So that would be a reduction of sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, we could also reduce the reserve deposit for the Camden Treatment Plant upgrades to sixty-two thousand from seventy-two thousand that was originally in the budget. Uh, this would be a savings of ten thousand dollars. Uh, this ten thousand dollar savings, however, would either need to be included in next year's, uh, capital plan or split out over a few years, which we could certainly do. Um, uh, we don't have a concrete timeline on when Camden, uh, intends on doing their treatment plant upgrades, but we do know that they have approval for the bonding. Uh, so we would expect that those upgrades would happen sometime in the near future. So with those two, uh, suggestions and recommending to keep the capital reserve, uh, the use of the capital reserve at a hundred and four thousand, um, this would reduce the debt service fee from seventy-four dollars and three cents to sixty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, which would be a decrease of five dollars and forty-five cents per equivalent user per quarter for a yearly total of twenty-one dollars and eighty cents.
And also that, the monthly versus quarterly billing? Did you already say that?
Uh, that's in the usage fee.
Yep.
Oh, it's in the, okay.
I'm just doing the debt service fee first.
Doug is there?
Okay, welcome Doug, okay. You have the, the four of us now.
Okay.
So Doug, um, where we're at is we, um, we, we approved on the wastewater commissioners, we approved the, um, applying the prior thirteen fifty rate to those who were undercharged in April and received the large bills. Um, because had they been properly charged on a meter, they would have been paying at the thirty, thirteen fifty rate instead of the higher rate. We approved that and now we're considering the additional, um, budget adjustments that Megan has suggested.
Okay, that's fine, that, you know, the audio is terrible. I'll just do the best I can and carry on.
Okay, you can't hear me very well or what? Or is it echoing?
No, no, I can hear you fine, but I have trouble hearing Megan and whatnot, so I'll, I'll do the best I can.
Okay, well, maybe we can try to adjust it here, okay.
So I would say that if you guys are okay with those adjustments, then you could vote on that, uh, that particular set of adjustments to reduce the debt service fee.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make three of them associated with debt service, right? I'm sorry, with the, with the two debt service related changes, uh, motion that we save sixteen thousand dollars associated with the capital improvement plan for lease payment of another vehicle and that we also reduce the reserve deposit for the Camden Treatment Plant upgrades from sixty-two thousand to seventy, to sixty-two thousand from the seventy-two thousand currently in the proposed budget, saving ten thousand.
And then, okay, um, is there a second to that motion, if you could hear it?
Second.
Is that Doug?
That was Mark.
That was Mark?
Mark.
Okay. Okay, is there further discussion on those two items in Jeff's motion? Okay, roll call, uh, Mark?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Were you gonna make another motion, Jeff? No.
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, so, uh, changes that could be made in order to reduce the usage rate. Uh, first is, uh, Main Water is not ready to move to monthly billing. Um, so we could reduce our sewer billing, uh, which would be a reduction of seventeen thousand dollars, so it'd reduce from thirty thousand to thirteen thousand. Uh, we can also reduce the Camden Treatment Plant billing amount. Uh, we currently have three hundred fifty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars in that line. Over the past five quarters, we've sent Camden an average of ten thousand six hundred and twelve units of wastewater to be treated per quarter. This would mean that on average, we send them forty-two thousand four hundred and forty-eight units of wastewater in the course of a year. Camden's current usage rate is seven dollars and forty-six cents, which would equate to three hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and eight cents. I would recommend that this budget amount could be reduced to thirty, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, a savings of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. My recommendation is there because our usage overall is higher for the first quarter of this year than it has been in the past. Also, we do not have the new rates from Rockland yet, but last year we spent one hundred forty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-five cent, two hundred and five dollars and forty-five cents to treat what we had sent to them. Figuring a ten percent increase between usage and rate adjustments, that would mean we would spend one hundred sixty-three dollars, one hundred sixty-three thousand twenty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. We currently have budgeted one hundred, one hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars. So we're pretty close in those estimates. With those changes I've outlined above, we could reduce the usage rate from nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents per quarter to eighteen dollars and ten cents per quarter, per unit, sorry. This would make a difference for an average single family user of about eight dollars and five cents per quarter or thirty-two dollars and twenty cents for the year.
A question on the monthly billing. What is, where does the savings come from?
Um, Main Water is looking at installing digital meters, which means that they would be able to read them at any intervals we request.
Okay, but the seventeen thousand dollars would be a check not written to whom?
To Main Water.
Okay. Deborah, I'll make a stab at it.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, I, motion that the board approve the usage rate related changes as proposed, specifically that the monthly billing from the administrative budget, uh, go to quarterly billing, which would result in a cost savings of seventeen thousand. And that the Camden Treatment Plant billing amount be reduced from three hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars as budgeted to a number of, uh, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, saving twenty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-two, twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars for the year.
Is there a second?
Third one, I've got, uh, is that we do no change to the Rockland billing.
No change to Rockland, right, right. So if somebody wants to second that motion, this is the time.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, um, Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Doug? Doug, was that a yes?
Yes, that was a yes.
I vote yes. Okay.
So then the last decision the board needs to make is whether you're gonna make it, those changes retroactive to the July billing.
I, I think we should.
Well, when, uh, yeah, but would, the changes proposed affect the twenty-twenty-one budget?
Affected.
Started July one. One, so I, I'm just challenged to figure out how to process this such that those changes go back to April. Be retroactive.
That's a good point, right. I think they really appropriately need to be going forward.
From July one to, to. For this fiscal year, I mean, that's what we.
I had forgotten the July bill is, right, for the current fiscal year.
That's what we made the motion on was regarding budget numbers for the current fiscal year.
But we don't need a motion if we just apply it to the current one, right?
Right.
Right, right, and I, I do think that's the appropriate method is, because it is the July first budget, effective date. And like I said, that's why we're not charging that late fee and the interest on those that are still, we're still reviewing. Because there are questions about those. And, and not, I wanna make a point too, that there is no standard answer in any of these cases yet. There's a lot of different reasons in every individual account as to why the account, the amount is different.
Speak louder for Doug, I think, yeah. Um, and, and, and Megan, wouldn't you say of the people that you've talked to that when you have looked into their numbers and so forth, into their individual accounts, that most people are pretty?
For, for the most part, um, so the process, just so you guys are aware, the process I go through when somebody calls or emails me and says, you know, there's no way my usage is this high. The first thing I'll do is I'll ask them to send me a copy of the bill that they got. And the information I gather from that bill is I'm able to average out their usage the eleven months prior to their April billing so that I can come up with what I would consider a true average. I mean, you're using eleven variables. It's a pretty standard number that we can work with. So then I'll take their April usage and their July usage, add those together, average those out and see if it falls in line with what their eleven prior month usage is. And if it's within the vicinity, then I'll explain to them the process I went through, how I got the numbers, and then I'll ask them, do you think this number is reasonable? If they say that it's not reasonable or I see that there's a discrepancy between what their April and July average out to be versus the prior eleven months, I ask them, do you have a pool that you fill? Do you have a hot tub that you fill? Have you done a lot of watering? Have you had a plumbing pipe break in your house? Are there, do you have an irrigation system? Are there more people living there? Have you been home more? And if the answers to those questions are all no, then at that point, I'll send it to Main Water and ask Main Water to see if they can come up with an explanation for the difference. If they answer yes to those questions, that's when I explain to them about putting a meter on their outside spigot so that they can call in and get that credit. The woman I told you about that was being charged the base rate because she's on well water, I explained to her to get a meter for that well water. Um, so I'm trying to work with the people that are coming in to try to find either a reasonable explanation for why their usage is up or explain to them that their usage isn't really up because of how the April billing was done versus the July billing and see if we can come up with some answers as to what their usage really is. And then if their usage, if they tell me there's only two people living in the house and they're using twenty-three units a quarter, why is your usage so high? Your usage for what we would consider normal is more than what you guys should be using. So do you have toilets that take longer to fill? Are you running more water than you should be? And look at those to see if we can find ways to help the sewer users reduce their overall bills. So I encourage anybody that thinks that their usage is wrong or wants to have me look at it, to just send me an email or call the office and we'll look at their account.
Thank you, thank you, Megan, for all your work on this.
I mean, the, as summarized here, we've taken two actions tonight to help those that were, um, significantly impacted through their last billing.
Actually, three actions, I think.
Well, 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 yes, I mean, but we've, we've done a couple of things from a budgetary standpoint.
Right.
That has resulted in, and you totaled it up here, I'm sorry, uh, uh, combined for a single user family yearly savings of fifty-four dollars just in the changes we've made to the twenty, twenty-one budget. But we also took action to help those hundred and seventeen people that were, uh, inappropriately billed, that whole group in term, uh, to find a way to get that right, so.
Yep, not to mention Megan's work of going through each individual account with people. Mark, did you have a comment?
I, I did, I, I just have a, where was the communication breakdown that didn't allow the thirteen dollar number to get shifted to the nineteen? I mean, and has that been fixed? I mean, I, it, what I'm gathering is everybody was billed to nineteen dollars for the whole period and it should have been partial thirteen and partial nineteen. Where was the breakdown in communications?
Can I try that? I think that Megan said that there really wasn't anybody's fault on that, but rather that, you know, because you had a, you had a, an estimated bill, you know, with respect to the April billing, and then you had a meter read in July. And of course, you know, as of July, you know, the nineteen is what is supposed to be charged. But then nobody perhaps really thought through the fact that, you know, some of these or, or didn't realize that some of these people had been under, uh, charged, um, undercharged in April. And, um, had they been charged appropriately, they would have been charged at the thirteen dollar rate instead of the nineteen dollar rate. Is that right, Megan?
Yeah, so I guess that goes back to my, you know, the people that are doing our billing for us. Should they not have thought that?
I, honestly, I don't know as though they, they would have because it really only affected about a third of the users that were billed in that quarter. And to be a hundred percent honest, it wasn't even something that I had really thought about until a sewer user brought it to my attention, that they were paying for usage from January, February, March in April, but then they were paying for the difference in July as well.
No, that's good, thank you, thank you, Megan. I, I just didn't, I, I really would prefer for everyone not to have that happen again, us and the users.
And I don't think that it would have happened if we hadn't been going through this whole COVID-nineteen mess. I think they would have done actual readings in April, which would have avoided ninety percent of the problems we're seeing right now.
Yeah. So I would like to just raise something that, um, I, I, I know I keep hearing that anytime, um, and we don't need to spend a lot of time on this. I, I would like the staff to just consider, give us some numbers on what it would look like for us to have our own sewer treatment plant. Because I hear kind of shoot-from-the-hip responses that, oh, no, it would be far more, um, expensive. But then I've talked to a couple of engineers in the last, um, week who say, oh, no, actually, I don't think it would be and you would actually save some money. So can we? So, can we task the staff with at least, I think it's our responsibility to just look at that question.
Well, I think it depends on how much in-depth detail you want us to look at it. Obviously, we don't have engineers on staff, so we'd have to rely on the experts that we contract with. And I think, Megan, you said the number's like $10,000 or something for them to do a study to be able to look at that, because they have to look at locations where it could be located strategically, because it can't be high, on high ground, because then you're dealing with pumps, you know, additional pumping stations and the like, but isn't that the number that you roughly got from Woodard and Kern?
Why don't we get a estimate on what it would cost to do a plus or minus 30% study? And see what we get, and find out how much it would cost, and then we can bring it back to the board and approve its manager.
Yeah, yeah, we certainly can do that, I mean, I think it is, I think it's worth looking at it.
Looking at, yeah.
We're not talking detailed engineering, I'm not talking about-
No, no.
Just rough feasibility.
How many gallons?
Right, because, you know, I, you know, granted, we, it's, it is what it is with respect to the six now, $7, whatever, the Camden residents are paying versus the 19 that, you know, that our residents are paying, I mean, and you've explained it very well as to why that's the case, but, um, you know, when you look at that difference, and then you look at the, you know, bonding it and so forth and so on, and the amounts that we pay to Rockland and Camden, just, you know, back-of-the-napkin sort of numbers suggest that maybe we could do better on this, or do better over the course of time.
I'm with you, it's worthy of just having the number so that we know what it is, and whether it's $2 million, 15 million, or 30 million. And then, the challenge is always there, you know, a significant portion of the, of the town of Rockport is not on the sewer system, and does not use public water, but uses well water and has septic systems, and, you know, what would be the support there, so we just need to find out, we just need to have facts.
So, with wastewater, um, the users are the only ones that pay debt service and usage fees. So if we bonded for a treatment plant, the users would pay for that, not the tax base.
But I think the number you gave me is like, we pay over $600,000 or something like that now to others to treat the waste, and you then look at that number compared to, you know, the, the cost perhaps of a potential bond and so forth for building that infrastructure might be, it still might be worth it, so.
And you could potentially, um, instead of having contracted staff to maintain the system, we would have to obviously hire our own staff, so there would be some of a cost savings there as well.
Cost savings by hiring your own staff, your own, yeah, okay, well, so we'll look into it. Okay, um, I think that's it for wastewater commissioners. I don't think we actually need a motion to leave the wastewater commissioner meeting. So the next item on the agenda is the town manager's report, Bill?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, uh, would anybody have any objection if I, if I moved up one item on the agenda here before the town manager's report, because I know that we've got two people who we might lose?
If we lose two, we don't have a forum, so-
Yeah, well, okay, if we lose one, Mark, you're hanging in there, aren't you?
I'm still with you.
Okay, all right, well, don't, don't lose us, okay, go ahead, we'll go ahead with the town manager's report.
Okay, um, as the board is well aware, and most of the public, I think, at this point, there has been assessment errors by the school districts at 28, where basically, Rockport has been over-assessed for its share of the school costs, and Camden has been under-assessed for the same amount. The school district had issued a press release basically saying that this has happened since at least 2009. Over the last week, um, they did hire an outside third party to verify the FY21 assessment so that we could make sure that we get our tax commitment done at an appropriate time after next week's town meeting.
When you say "they," you mean Camden?
No, the school district hired the consultant, Camden agreed with the consultant, and I was asked as well, once we reviewed her credentials, and I agreed with the consultant as well, the, the choice of the consultant. And I think it's also important to note that, um, there's definitely needs to be further investigation that will be happening as we work through this process to determine how far back indeed those errors went, what the exact amounts are over those years. And I also want to say that, um, this, from my perspective, this started back in March and April when I was reviewing the estimated assessment from the school district to, to determine what, what the estimated tax rate might be while we were looking at our budget. And I, it didn't look correct to me, and I'm not an expert when it comes to the school funding formula by any stretch, but just knowing about the valuation that the town of Rockport had experienced a decrease previously, and that Camden had increased their valuation because they had a revaluation around the same time, it, to me, looked like there, there was an issue because our assessment was going up and Camden's was not. So I had brought that to the assessor and to Megan Brackett, and just, just asked for their opinions as to what they thought, and they had said that they thought that there was an error also in the valuation. I know the school district has gone through a number of business managers recently. And there was, um, there also was discussion again in June, when I was asking again for the assessment data, as we get closer to our town meeting and knowing more about what our valuation increases are for this year. And when Megan contacted the business office, there was a new business manager that started, and so he was reviewing the data, and he did uncover some errors in the formula, and that's when the school district investigated that further. For the taxpayers, I think it's important to note that the number that where we would have been over-assessed for this fiscal year is about $422,000. And so, we, we will not be assessed that much. And essentially, that makes up about 40 to 45 cents in the tax rate. So it's a substantial amount of money, and that's just for this year going forward. So we know that the tax rate's gonna be affected in a positive way by 40 to 45 cents, which is definitely good news.
And I, I would just say that, you know, certainly, this wasn't Rockport's fault, and certainly, it wasn't Camden's fault, and so, you know, we, um, we recognize that, I think that the board recognizes and is pretty adamant about the fact that we need to go back, as you've said, Bill, and make sure that we, um, we know exactly how much we've overpaid since day one. So anyway, we're in the process of doing that.
Yes, more information will become forthcoming as, as we work through the process. Uh, the public safety building, uh, public safety building parking lot project, this is one of the infrastructure projects in the 2019 infrastructure bond. We received two bids from Wellman, Wellman paving from Winterport and from Performance Paving from Isles Head. And we essentially bid it out two different ways, one way was just to repave, to shim and overlay the parking lot, the other way is to reclaim the park, parking lot, which basically is to grind up all the asphalt that's there, compact it, grade it, regrade it, and then pave. The second option, obviously, is much more expensive, it's about double the cost, but in consulting with an engineer at no cost to the town, it was definitely recommended because we had a number of cracks that had been created over the years, and if we had simply done a shim and an overlay, those cracks are gonna come back in three or four years, and we'll have the same situation. By doing a, um, a reclaim, it allows us to essentially eliminate all that problem. So actually, it was awarded to, I awarded it to Performance Paving, and they actually reclaimed the parking lot today. So that's, process has started, the next step will be for Public Works to come in and excavate in front of the garage bay doors, and put in some better base there so that we don't have the rutting that's occurred with the fire trucks coming out of the bays. So that'll be happening relatively soon, and at the same time, we'll be putting in some underdrain, because currently, the gutters that come down off the front of the building drain onto the front of the parking lot, and create ice, obviously, in the winter, and water problems the rest of the time, and don't do any good for the parking lot as it is. So those will be connected to an underdrain that will then be going to a catch basin that's at the corner of the parking lot and Camden Street. So that'll eliminate a lot of different problems with that parking lot. The parking work group did meet again on, for the first time on July, July 24th, the first time since the start of the pandemic, and we basically reviewed where we had left off so that we can start back up. In the meantime, the police chief has put, put our traffic data sign out at various locations that we had identified to gather some more data. He is looking back also at previous years, because obviously, the traffic is, is different now during the pandemic than it was before. And we do meet again, I believe, to the next week or the week after, so we're, we're ramping that process back up. As you are aware, Pascal Avenue crosswalks, there were a couple that were not repainted, particularly near Ship Street and near the rare business. After I had some residents contact me about those locations, Public Works Director Young contacted DOT again to find out if we could put them back or not. I will say publicly that we get different answers depending on what time of day it seems like we call DOT, so we are repainting those crosswalks. We are moving the rare crosswalk a little bit, and that he will be losing one parking space in his parking lot, and he is okay with that, because he wants that side, that crosswalk back again. But we explained to him, we had to move it so we had a safe landing zone, and that would eliminate one parking space, and he's, he's okay with that.
It's clear, when, uh, when you initially went into that, that, that it's because of the main DOT, they're the ones that required us to get rid of the crosswalk, and so now, we're getting it back.
Yeah, they were the ones that said we had to get rid of them previously and not repaint them because of their locations and whether or not we had safe landing zones. So we do have to purchase some plates that are ADA accessibility issues that will go at the end of each crosswalk, and, and move one of the locations slightly. Just for residents to be aware, and the town to be aware, Main Water notified us and residents on C Street that, that Main Water will be replacing approximately 1,800 feet of two and a quarter cast iron water main with eight inch ductile iron water main. They expect this project to begin by the end of August. Would have been nice if we had known prior to this, because most likely, in a year or so, or a year and a half, maybe two, we'll be doing work on, on C Street, because that road needs to be rebuilt, and there's a lot of drainage issues. So it would have been nice to partner with that, and I've had those conversations with Main Water to say, you know, let's, let's try to get our projects to coincide so that we can not open the street up more than once. Revenue sharing projections, uh, the state's revenue forecasting committee met recently, and the state treasurer released new revenue sharing projections on August 3rd. The original projection was back in March, and it came in at $348,000. The new projection came in at $308,000, which is actually pretty good news, I think. If you recall, back during the budget process and after the budget process, when we were looking at the budget again for adjustments because of the pandemic, I didn't adjust the revenue sharing number net down, because we only estimated it $216,000, to be extra conservative, because we saw the pandemic was coming on, and we just wanted to be careful there. So, the good news there is that we're slated to get almost $90,000, approximately more than what we have budgeted, so that's definitely a good thing, and that will help the tax rate as well. The West Rockport Fire Station project continues. Chief Peaslee and I met with the architects, Ann Bill Lane from Gartley and Dorsky Engineers, and reviewed the preliminary sketches that she had put together after the discussions with the stakeholder group about, you know, what kind of spaces they were, were needed in that building, and what they'd be used for and the like. The architect had also toured the current station, both of our stations, and then they also toured the Lincolnville Station, which is the only new one in the area.
Did, uh, just a quick question, did two-way architects, were they involved in the Lincolnville fire?
They were not, they were not, so that's why we had them go up and do that tour, which, which certainly helped their perspective to see a newer building. And so, they're gonna, um, they're gonna make some more changes to the sketches after we've met. We're particularly concerned about the exterior look of the building. We want to make sure that, obviously, it's a fire station, so those buildings are large anyway. We want to try to minimize the appearance of the, of the size of the building by doing things like some, some false dormers on the roof line, because a roof line is a large roof line. Doing some treatments on the outside of the building with two different types of treatments, like brick and clapboard, that type of thing that minimizes the size of it, if you will.
The big box appearance.
Yes, yeah, so, some really good ideas from, from them to do that, which is helpful. But it also, those dormers will also let light in to the garage bays, which will be a good thing as well. So as we get further along in that process, we'll certainly, we'll have presentations to the select board when we, when we get to that point. The annual employee barbecue that's usually held in July, I, I did cancel for obvious reasons. But I did also want to recognize the employee, employees that had years of service awards that will be handed out to them this week with me and the department heads. So Russell Fuller is in the Public Works Department and has a 20-year anniversary. Scott Bickford, the code enforcement officer, has 15 years. Carrie Leichman, our assessor, has 10 years. And James Moore in the Police Department has five years. I certainly appreciate all of their work, and as I said, they'll be recognized this week.
That's great, thank you. Hey, Doug, Doug, put us on mute when you're talking, please.
Couple more things to add to the report that's not in the written report.
Streetlights.
Yes, the LED streetlight project started last Thursday, August 6th, after a little bit of pressure from me to, to get them moved up. The last two days, they worked on it Thursday and Friday, the report that I received was Friday afternoon, 19 fixtures were installed in those two days. A little bit slower than what I had anticipated, but that's only because they have to, they're replacing the arms, and not just the fixture itself, and there are a number of areas where they have to correct the grounding of the light that wasn't necessarily grounded correctly previously.
Why would the power company have?
What's that?
Why would the power company have good grounding, right?
Yeah, exactly, and I also wanted to note, um, the town clerk noted to me that the August 18th town meeting, I wanted to remind everybody of that, of course, that's held by referendum coming up, so that's next week. At this point, she has informed me that there are 340 absentee ballots that have been requested for that, with 145 returned. And in addition to that, the November presidential election, the absentee applications for that are now available as well, so people can begin filling out the application for absentee ballots for the November election, and I certainly would encourage everybody to do that for November especially, because there'll be a huge number of people voting, which is a good thing, but it's definitely safer to do it by absentee if you can.
Don't forget to vote.
Yeah, do we have all that posted on the website?
Uh, we don't have the November information posted yet, but that will be going up, yes.
Don't forget to vote in the August, uh, the August town election. Okay, um, then, is that it?
Yes.
Um, the next item on the agenda is, are there public input on non-agenda items? So do you know if we have any public input?
Um, I had a comment on the livestream that came in a little bit, I think, late after, basically talking about the wastewater system, and the comment is, "The system is forced to pay a huge sum for the infiltration problem. Beyond examining the pipes for breaks which might account for this, what will be done to identify the source?" And I think we're doing it on a step-by-step basis, so we've, we've looked at the basement connections, the some pump connections, that sort of thing, and the next step is the cameras that will go through to check for break, uh, breaks. And then we'll look to our engineers to decide what the next step is once we've determined whether or not there's a solution there or not. So that would be the answer to that.
In other words, we're doing everything we can do.
We are, we certainly are.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay, um, there's no public here, you don't have any comments, do you?
No.
Mark? Okay, so then the moving, okay, moving on, is the, the next item is, are there amendments to the agenda? I don't have any, since we're gonna just whip right through the rest of this agenda here. Okay, so the consent agenda is the next item.
Move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mark, would you like a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just in the consent agenda, I would like to thank John Lane of Pleasant Mountain Blueberries for donating to Public Works.
Yes, thank you. Okay, roll call, Jeff?
Aye.
Mark?
Yep, yes.
Doug, are you still with us?
Yes and yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Okay, the next item, we're going on to action items. Then, the first on the action items is, act on recommendation of the Camden-Rockport Broadband Task Force. I serve, I'm one of three people who serve on that task force, and you may recall that we had agreed to form this Camden-Rockport Broadband Task Force, and the task force or its sort of predecessor drafted and published about seven articles pre-pandemic about the benefits and the need for high-speed internet. And I think the pandemic has done a lot to demonstrate firsthand a lot of those points with respect to education, telecommuting, and healthcare. This, the task force has had, has been in discussions with Mission Broadband, who has experience, or well, first of all, who prepared some surveys at no cost to the towns of Camden and Rockport. We posted those on our website and Facebook page to gauge how residents were doing with respect to internet connectivity during the pandemic. Of course, it confirmed that there's difficulty with respect to bandwidth and reliability of service for a, a number, not all, a num, a, a good number of residents. In meetings that we've had with Mission Broadband, we have, we've come to the conclusion that taking two steps at this point would be the appropriate next two steps, and that they are, to develop what is called a high-level design for the system as well as, as engage in the RFP process. Again, let me point out that this is not, this is not an approval of going forth with any broadband system between the two towns. It is simply the next step that we, we need to sort of get our arms around, you know, what the cost of a broadband system, what the options are for Camden and Rockport. And once we get those parameters, we get those costs, then it will then be, we'll have a lot more useful discussions with respect to whether it's feasible, how it would be feasible, and so forth. You recall that we did budget $15,000 apiece, each town did, and part of that that we budgeted was, was, was grant money. And, and so we have a proposal that is in your packet from Mission, and for these first two phases, which are a little bit under $10,000 apiece for Camden and for Rockport. The Camden Select Board addresses issue on August 4th, and they voted to proceed and authorized an amount not to exceed $10,000 for the project, and I'm hoping that this board will consider doing the same thing.
I move the board adopt the recommendation of the Camden-Rockport Broadband Task Force to retain the services of Mission Broadband to design a system and draft a request for proposal to bring high-speed internet or increase certainly the capacity of high-speed internet to the communities of Rockport and Camden, with the town of Rockport allocating up to $10,000 of the $15,000 budgeted for this purpose. It's a study, it's the next logical step.
And I'll second that. Any discussion?
Yeah, Doug's here. Just, you know, I don't have any problems at all going ahead and looking to see what these things would cost because I'm sure ultimately this would have to go to the citizens. But again, my feeling is, is that with changes in technology that have happened and the benefits of a high-speed internet for economic development, I certainly think it's worth a little bit of seed money to look into what the options are and see what it might cost us going down the road, so I'm gonna support this.
I recall the days when we were asked as voters to approve a $300,000 study to implement an $8 million system, and that crashed and burned. As it should have.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking spending upwards of $10,000 at the town of Rockport to learn the same thing.
Well, I also want to add that we have a $7,500 grant that will go towards this project, so.
So 70, I think 70% of it, yeah, 70% of it is covered by the grant.
You know, so we're, we're not incurring too much expense.
All right, so we have a first and second, so roll call, Jeff?
Aye.
Doug?
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the MMA Annual Election. Bill, you wanna address this?
Yes. So each year, all of the member communities that belong to MMA elect a vice president and two or three members to the executive committee. Excuse me. There is a nominating process that's followed, and then MMA submits a proposed slate of nominees to member municipalities. There is no option for a write-in candidate because of the nominating process. The voting ballot must be approved and signed by a majority of the select board or a municipal official designated by the board. Instead of voting on the proposed slate each year, the board could choose to authorize the manager to perform this function each year, simply because there is no write-in candidate options. Then that would be a simple thing for me to, to do each year. I mean, all it would be, would be to cast the ballot for those slate of nominees, or if you wish to address this each year, you certainly can do it that way, too.
The pleasure of the board to either cast the ballot, the board directly, or to authorize Bill to cast the town of Rockport's?
Well, I'll move the board authorize the town manager to cast the town of Rockport's MMA Main Municipal Association Executive Committee and Vice President ballot annually.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, Bill knows these people.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, that's why we're, hence my rationalization for saying it's all you, Bill.
And the nominating committee obviously, you know, has gone through the whole process previously to vet them, and it is a, it is a fairly extensive vetting process before they put that slate of nominees forward.
Any discussion, any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Deborah, I missed, I missed the gist of, I missed the gist of the motion. Which one did they, which one do you want to go with?
Uh, we're going, the one that's on the table is to have Bill cast the votes on our behalf.
Okay, all right.
Because he knows, you know, generally knows these people and we don't. Kind of the same discussion we had last year.
I vote.
Okay.
I vote yes.
Okay, all right, so roll call, okay. Doug voted yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, great. Okay, the next item is the discussion, discuss program room use and future maintenance at the new library. Ben, please come up, and Doug, are you gonna be able to kind of present this?
I think I can very briefly because I don't think there's a lot needs to come out of it. I think the little white paper that I did should speak for itself pretty much. I think the meat of this discussion is found on the second page where I raised several questions about how the community room is gonna be used. I know that one thing that Denise has been working with, the Opera House Committee, hoping to look at some of their scheduling improvements that should be done, and so the question, of course, would come up, did the community room and the Opera House get scheduled together? And getting back to the community room, how that space could be used? And again, I think another thing we could just talk a little bit about how that can be done, I think it'll have to be thrown over to the town manager to draw policies with our guidance.
Yeah, and I, I think I can weigh in there, Doug. I've had this discussion with the library director, excuse me, as well, and we actually met with the Opera House manager because our thoughts were that if we were trying to utilize and market the two buildings cohesively, that it would make sense for him to be the one that would oversee the use of the community room at the new library on those instances when the library's not open. So, you know, nights, weekends, that type of thing. And then during the, the day, obviously that, that room will be used as well by the library. So then, at that time, whether it's a program that's done by the library or what's happening, but during those times, it would be the library director and staff that would kind of control and reserve that room because they would be using it during those open hours. I, I think that's the, my, my personal feeling is that's probably the best way to handle it. And the Opera House manager has, will have an office in the new library as well in, on that floor, and so he'll be very familiar with it, will be trained on all the equipment and that sort of thing. Obviously, the policy, Ben and I actually have worked on draft policies as well as we move towards the opening of the new library, so I think if the board, if that makes sense to the board, we'd move forward in that direction in crafting a final policy to come to the board that talks about the use. And we still have to talk about the fee structure. Obviously, if it's the library that's using it, they're gonna want to bring in groups that are probably offering free program, so we wouldn't charge for the use if it's a library program event. But if it's being rented by an outside organization, when the library's not open, then we would put together an appropriate fee schedule, making sure that we're covering our costs at the very least. But also, what I'd like to see is the revenue from that go into some sort of a reserve accounts for the upkeep of that, of that space. We, we know that over the years, we're gonna have to be replacing chairs, tables, other things that we'll wear, whether it's, you know, carpeting, painting the room, whatever, whatever may be. So if we had some, if we had the fee schedule developed such that we had some revenue that would be able to be put into reserve accounts, then that takes the onus off the taxpayer when it comes to updates and maintenance for that space. So those are our initial thoughts when we were starting to look at that, and Ben, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Uh, no, I mean, the room was, the library itself, and specifically that room, was always designed to be able to do that, so we can lock off everything that is sort of library essential and leave open the bathrooms, doors, and we can do events when we're not in there. And it just makes sense to utilize that space the best we can, the most amount that we can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Doug has any comments, or if he heard me or not?
Deborah?
Yes, go ahead, Doug.
Certainly, I just, you know, I'm in a bad reception area, I really can't make out any of the discussion, so I guess I'll just have to catch up with Bill in the next day or so, sort of see what the sense of the group is.
Okay, all right. They'll put, they're gonna be putting together a plan and bringing it back to us, but that's, that's good, Doug, follow up with Bill.
Okay.
So Doug raised some of the, you know, some interesting questions here with respect to, you know, a number of different things and maybe different sources of revenue that we should be looking at, and I take it you guys will discuss that and bring all of that back to us?
Yeah, I mean, and I think, you know, around the, around the use of the community space, I think that's fairly easy because we know how many people can be in there, what type of events, and, and the equipment and all of that that will be in the room. We have the Opera House fee schedule, for instance, for the George Parker Room, so we have a good basis from going on. And we talked about the fact that we'd want a staff person present at any of those events, so any of the fees would want to, would have to cover the cost of that staff person. And then we can put together a formula for electricity and the like, which wouldn't be much, but we just want to make sure that we cover all the costs. And again, using the Opera House fee schedule as a basis, we can, we can easily put something together. Some of the other things that Doug had put together or questions that he asked about ongoing building maintenance requirements, I think that's important to note. We don't want to start behind, if you will. So anytime you have a new building, it's certainly important for us to be understanding all of the needs for that building going forward, whether it's, once the equipment is getting to a certain age, and we'll get the information from the architect and the engineers as to, you know, when can we expect to have maintenance on, on this system and that system and the like, and be able to project those costs out. And then with the capital improvement committee, I think we can sit down, we can put together a list of accounts that we're gonna need to fund and, and get those in place when we need to.
And do you think that, I think he, he's trying to, I think part of what Doug is trying to do is to kind of look at this creatively and see if there are some additional sources of revenue that we might be able to come up with, so I hope you guys will spend some time doing that, too.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we've had some discussions on that, and I've talked with Doug before as well about, you know, just brainstorming with some thoughts, so we certainly are gonna be considering all of that, and I will definitely touch base with Doug, you know, after the meeting sometime in the next day or two.
Okay, thanks. Ben, are you getting excited?
Yeah. There's a lot of work in between here and there, but it is exciting. Have you guys been, you should go over there if you haven't been in lately.
Well, I've gone in, I've gone in a couple times with Charlie. He grabs me when I'm going by and, and, and I've gone in, and it's, yeah, it's great, great. I, I probably haven't been in there for four weeks or whatever, three weeks, yeah.
Yeah, it changes like every day now. It's moving really fast, it's exciting.
Yeah.
And, and we are just off topic, well, on topic but off topic. We are putting together a schedule for furniture deliveries, moving dates, you know, closing the library at the current location and the like, so we're nailing down the nitty gritty details with that, so all hands on deck for, for Charlie's crew and certainly ours, too, to try to coordinate the moving and the furniture deliveries and the shelves building and, and the like, so.
The clock looks great at night.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, the, the streetlights that haven't been working, we haven't needed them because the clock brightens up my path home.
That's great.
Maybe we shouldn't install those streetlights?
No, no, let's still have those streetlights. Okay. That was, that was the last item other than any liaison reports, but first, um...
Do you want to go through the meetings?
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, first I'm gonna do the meetings, and so again, Tuesday, August 18th is elections, Wednesday, the 19th is a select board and regular meeting and organizational meeting here. And then Monday, the 7th, you know, the, the office is closed for Labor Day, and the 14th is the regular select board meeting here.
On the elections, just a lot of information on the news around not waiting until the last minute to send your ballots in and back. If you've got them done today, they're in the mail today.
Yes.
I think the town office would appreciate it, and it would be a shame for it to be mailed on one day and not show up until two days later.
Okay, select board reports. Mark, do you have any select board reports?
Please, on?
None.
Okay, and Doug, are you even there? I think we probably lost Doug. Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, the pathways committee, which is a combined committee of Camden-Rockport residents, met on August 5th. The agenda was of this particular meeting, it was pretty much 100% Camden-related, but there are some things on there that may or could impact Rockport in the future, or maybe things we want to watch. There's a lot of activity going on around the Riverwalk and property and preparation for the path in and around the Mcgunnacook River and in that area. That's been an ongoing thing for a long, long time. There's a lot of activity in Camden around pave-a-rounds on poles because trying to maintain proper sidewalk width and ADA compliance and that type of thing. Pave-a-rounds, right-of-ways of the town regarding pave-a-rounds, encroachment on property, something on... something always to be concerned with.
Did you say pave arounds?
Pave arounds. What you do is, if the, if a utility company plugs a pole right in the middle of the sidewalk, town ends up having to pave a chunk of the sidewalk around the pole. And it can't be X feet wide, it has to be something different. So, and the other issue with that is that oftentimes the utility companies don't provide the town with notice on those items. So as a result, it turns into a, an issue. And then lastly, something that we might all want to watch is this, there's a proposal regarding mechanic street and doing bike lanes on both sides and basically having a two-way, one-way street, where the normal lanes, travel lanes for vehicles would be much narrower because the bike pass will be on the sides. Either a white or a single yellow line down the middle of it and guidance on both ends of mechanic street that would say, this is a combination one-way, two-way street with bike pass. Bikes have the right of way. If there are two cars coming, they have to do a jog to one side or the other. And again, the bikes have the right of way, so.
This is in Camden?
This is in, all, everything I'm talking about is in Camden.
Right, so I just want to make sure so that people don't think we're talking mechanic street.
As I said early on, the agenda was a hundred percent all Camden, and these are the things that we might want to watch. So stay tuned on that one. The lines have not been painted yet, and things may transpire.
It's interesting, how does that, I mean.
Well, it works in other parts of the state, I mean, there are, there are these types of arrangements. Yeah, there are these types of arrangements in other parts of the state to accommodate both bikes, pedestrians, and vehicles. But it's something that hasn't happened here yet.
Hmm, interesting.
That's all.
Okay, so Midco Solid Waste had their annual meeting. They elected the same officers as before, which is Bob Falciani as the chair and Allison McKellar as the treasurer, Mike Brown from Rockport, I, Hope, sorry, as the vice president, and David Barrows from Lincolnville as the treasurer, or, sorry, secretary. Jeez, if you could follow that. And we also approved a set, new revised set of bylaws, which I need to provide to you guys, I will do that. Which I, I chair the governance committee, and we have worked for the last six months on approving various new bylaws. One of those was to free up our town manager from having to go to all of the meetings. It previously required that two, two of the executive committee members, being town managers, had to come, had to be at the meeting in order for there to be a quorum, which was silly, because the town managers as executive committee members don't have a vote. So why do they have to be there for purposes of establishing a quorum? So those are some of the kind of cleanup changes. You know, things like the weighted vote are gonna rear their heads again, because Hope and Lincolnville are not happy with, you know, the weighted vote, understandably. So there are some policy issues that are gonna have to be addressed, one way or another. But at least for now, we have a better, better set of bylaws. It's just a little bit more workable, manageable. So that's first up. You might recall Owen Cassas came to us a couple years ago, right? And said, I think shortly after you and I came on the board and said, you know, the bylaws are awful and the governance is, you know, got issues. And I'm happy to say that those things have really been improved. That's all I have.
Can I just add two from the finance committee's perspective? Another thing that was approved is that I'm taking Deborah's place on the finance committee for Midco Solid Waste, so while I'm not going into the board meetings, I have another committee that I have to serve on.
And he does such a good job.
Well, I, as you know, I like numbers, so, and I like budgeting, so it's a good place for me. But the corporation ended the year in the black substantially, which was not anticipated to happen, and I guess hasn't happened in a while. So that's definitely a good sign of good oversight from the board, but also the finance committee's work. And then the, I think the new manager had a lot to, to do with that. And Dave St. Laurent, who was the interim manager while the search was on and they were hiring the new one. And at a future date, we will get the new manager to the board meeting so that he can be introduced and introduce himself once we get freed up a little bit more with our agenda topics. But I'm impressed with him so far. I think he's gonna do a fantastic job. And he knows his stuff.
Yeah, he's good. I'm impressed with him, too. And I'm going on a field trip to Eko Maine on Monday, my first time. Oops. Okay, that's it. Yeah, that's it. I think that's it for liaison reports, son. Unless anybody has anything else, we're ready to adjourn.
Motion, will you adjourn, select board meeting?
Mark, would you like to second that?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Jeff?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Doug, are you there? Okay, and I vote aye. All right, stand adjourned.